At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to please be seated if you can be as we're about to begin the ceremony. Good morning, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners 2022 Investiture Ceremony. Today, Harry Cohen, Ken Hagan, Gwen Myers, Michael Owen, Donna Cameron Cepeda, and Joshua Wostel will take the oath of office for Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Please stand as the Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Honor Guard begins our ceremony with the presentation of colors. And at this time, if you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd also like at this time to ask Commissioner Myers to do the invocation this morning.
Let us pray. O God, gracious having the Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you as six new commissioners would be, would take the oath of office today. Father, as we serve all mankind, to make sure that Hillsborough County continue to serve all citizens for affordable housing, for rent, for healthcare, for transportation. We also thank you, Father, as these families are here to witness and to see the installation and the swearing-in today. We thank you as we prepare for Thanksgiving on Thursday. Today, we celebrate and give thanks to you for allowing us to be here and allowing us to serve Hillsborough County. Father, I ask these blessings in your darling namesake. Amen.
And please remain standing while the color guard comes forward. I'd like to thank you for being here on this very special day as the re-elected and newly-elected members of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners take their oaths of office. We have several government officials with us here today who I'd like to recognize, including Susan Lopez, the state attorney, and Nancy Milan, the tax collector. If there are any officials I've missed, please stand at this time. We will begin with our oaths of office. The first to take the oath of office is Harry Cohen, representing District One. I invite Mr. Cohen and his swearing-in party to come forward. And administering the oath for Harry Cohen is Jennifer McDonald.
You come on this side.
Okay, I go on this side?
I'm left-handed, so I'm...
I think you gotta get further from the mics because...
Okay.
Is it...
Right hand on the panel?
Yes.
I...
I, Harry Cohen...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect...
That I will support, protect...
And defend the Constitution and government...
And defend the Constitution and government...
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida...
And of the State of Florida.
And Hillsborough County Charter...
And Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified...
To hold the office...
To hold the office.
Under the Constitution of the State...
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
The duties of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County...
The duties of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County...
On which I am now about to enter...
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, Ken Hagan, representing District Two, will take the oath of office. I invite Mr. Hagan and his swearing-in party to come forward.
Son, I am proud and honored to administer this oath on your 21st year. Repeat after me, please. I, Ken Hagan...
I, Ken Hagan...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
And government...
And government.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida...
And of the State of Florida.
And the Hillsborough County Charter...
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified...
To hold office under the Constitution of the State...
To hold office under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
Perform the duties of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County...
Will perform the duties of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County...
On which I am now about to enter...
As I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next to take the oath of office is Gwen Myers, representing District Three. Would Ms. Myers and her swearing-in party please come forward?
I feel like the Supremes are getting ready to do a number.
My poor sister.
Next to take, sorry, administering the oath of office for Gwen Myers is the Honorable Judge Mary S. Scriven, U.S. District Court for the Middle District of Florida.
First, let me say I am honored to serve in this moment with you on this august occasion. You know, our first oath comes from Micah, "To do justice, love mercy, and walk unbelie- with God." That's your first oath.
Thank you.
And this is your government oath.
Thank you.
I state your name...
I, Gwendolyn W. Myers.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
Protect...
Protect.
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution and government...
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida...
And of the State of Florida.
And the Hillsborough County Charter...
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified...
To hold office...
To hold office.
Under the Constitution...
Under the Constitution.
Of the State...
Of the State.
And that I will well...
And that I will well...
And faithfully...
And faithfully.
Perform the duties...
Perform the duties.
Of County Commissioner...
Of County Commissioner.
Of Hillsborough County...
Of Hillsborough County.
On which I am now...
On which, on which I am now...
About to enter...
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Congratulations.
Michael Owen, representing District Four, will now take the oath of office. I invite Mr. Owen and his swearing-in party to come forward.
Yeah. It's a real judge.
Administering the oath for Mr. Owen is the Honorable Judge James Moody III of the 13th Judicial Circuit.
All right. I, Michael Owen...
I, Michael J. Owen...
Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And government of the United States...
And government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
And the State, and, excuse me, and the Hillsborough County Charter...
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State...
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Perform the duties of County Commissioner.
Perform the duties of County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter...
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Representing District Five is Donna Cameron Cepeda, who will now take the oath of office. I invite Ms. Cameron Cepeda and her swearing-in party to come forward.
Romans 11, Romans 11:36 says...
I was just going to, administering the oath for Donna Cameron Cepeda is Apostle Lewis Capdevia.
Thank you. Romans 11:36 says, "From him, through him, and to him are all things," and that is your commission here before God. All right, with that said, I want you to state your name and say, "I..."
I, Donna Lynn Cameron Cepeda.
All right, do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Protect...
Protect.
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
And the government of the United States...
And the government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the Hillsborough County Charter...
And of the Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified...
And that I am duly qualified...
To hold office...
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State...
Under the Constitution of the State.
That I will, I will well faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform...
The duties of the County Commissioner...
The duties of the County Commissioner.
Of the Hillsborough County...
Of the Hillsborough County.
On which I am now...
On which I am now...
About to enter...
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay.
Thank you.
And now, representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel will take the oath of office. I invite Mr. Wostel and his swearing-in party to come forward.
I...
I, Joshua Wostel...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida...
And of the State of Florida.
And the Hillsborough County Charter...
And the Hillsborough County Charter.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution of the State...
To hold office under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
That I will, that I will well and faithfully perform...
The duties of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County...
The duties of County Commissioner of Hillsborough County.
On which I am now about to enter...
Of which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
A little break there for a Kodak moment. Good morning, and thank all of you. Congratulations to everyone here this morning. I'm looking forward to working together with each of you for the next two years. We have a lot of challenges and ahead and a lot of decisions to make, and I know we're all here to do our best to work together for the future of Hillsborough County. And with that, I will ask to hear from our county administrator, Bonnie Wise.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. And I just wanted to say heartfelt congratulations to each and every one of you and also to your families, because this is a very big issue, a big deal, and your families are going to be sharing you with us quite a bit. And so I want to thank, big shout out to the families for, for doing so. I very much look forward to working with you. The citizens of Hillsborough County are going to be well-served, and I look forward to helping you with that.
And now we'll hear from Christine Becker, County Attorney.
Yes, this is always one of the most exciting days in county government, and again, congratulations to all of you. My office and I stand ready to assist you in any way that we can. We'll be available to you 24/7, and we really look forward to working with you and this new board.
At this time, I invite our colleagues who have just taken the oath of office to say a few words, and first is Commissioner Cohen, who represents District One.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kemp. Congratulations, everyone. Before I begin my remarks, there are just a few people I would like to thank this morning, particularly the lovely Jen McDonald for helping me to administer the oath, and also my parents, who are in the audience today and in so many ways are responsible for helping me to reach this point. I really appreciate everything that you did all through the years to get us to this day. I also want to thank my aides, Della and Lydia, who have been with me since the very beginning and have performed beautifully and given me such a spine and stability within my office. It is a great honor and privilege to represent the citizens of Hillsborough County as a county commissioner. There are few things in life more sacred than the public trust, which we have just sworn an oath to uphold. And as we embark on the work that brings us together, I thought of a quote from Margaret Thatcher that she said when she entered 10 Downing Street for the first time as Prime Minister. "Where there is discord, may we bring harmony; where there is error, may we bring truth; where there is doubt, may we bring faith; and where there is despair, may we bring hope." Whatever our difference is and whatever our views, we are all dedicated to making this county the best it can be. I look forward to working with each of you and our tremendously talented staff and tested leadership team to do just that, to make this a community that we can all be proud to call home. Thank you very much.
For District Two, Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I want to thank everyone for joining us for this very special ceremony. It's hard to believe that this is my 11th investiture, seven after an election and four as a sitting commissioner. But even after 11 investitures and 20 years, I tell you, I still get, still get sweaty palms, and I still get excited about this ceremony because it allows us to reflect on the recent campaign season, but at the same time, we celebrate a new board and a new beginning. I've seen many ups and downs over the last, in board changes over the last 20 years, but I can say that I'm truly excited about this new board and the opportunities that lie ahead. I feel this board provides more balance than any board I've served on, from a gender perspective, partisan perspective, but we also have a nice balance with four incumbents and three newly-elected commissioners. New commissioners bring new ideas, new perspectives, and a different way of approaching our issues and challenges, and I welcome that. I want to congratulate and welcome our new board members, Commissioner Cepeda, Commissioner Wostel, and Commissioner Owen. You each bring unique, real-world experiences and fresh perspectives that I know will make you excellent commissioners. I pledge to work with you on your goals and your priorities in an effort to improve the quality of life for everyone in our county. Thanks to the leadership of this board and the county administrator and her team, the county has established a strong financial foundation that positions us well to move forward and to address our needs. But as strong as Hillsborough County is financially, we face enormous challenges, starting with the explosive growth that we are experiencing and are expected to experience over the next 10 years. That's why it's critically important that we continue to improve efficiencies and our organizational performance while maintaining the highest level of service delivery. This board has worked hard in the past on job creation and expanding our economy. In fact, in many quarters, we've led the state in job creation. However, not everyone has benefited from this economic recovery. Too many Floridians are struggling and unable to make ends meet. This is simply unacceptable. We must grow our economy with job diversification strategies and by having a laser-like focus toward fostering an environment that's open for business. We need to continue to create and develop a landscape that actively recruits and creates high-wage, innovative, and technologically-driven industries. This is critically important if our best and brightest are going to remain in our community. We all know transportation is an enormous issue impacting our region. If we are serious about improving our mobility for our residents and being a world-class community that competes with cities across this country, we must understand the reality of our choices and be prepared to make informed and responsible decisions regarding our short and long-term transportation planning. Our community deserves it, and more importantly, our children and grandchildren deserve it. I'm honored and humbled to have served for 20 years on the county commission. I want to thank the residents of District Two for having trust in me to represent them as their district commissioner. Dozens of family and friends have played an integral role in each of my campaigns, and it's not possible to thank everyone. However, I do want to thank my two legislative aides who run our office and make sure the day-to-day tasks of constituent service are our number-one priority, and that's Glenn Navarro and Rich Reedy. They work extremely hard, not only in running our office and taking briefings during the day, but they also attend public meetings and campaign events during, during the evening. Without them, our office would certainly fall apart. Special thank you to Rich, who's been there from the beginning. Rich is a tireless campaigner and works night and day fighting for our constituents. I also want to thank my family for being there for me during all my campaigns, starting with my wife, Susan. Campaign season, really all during the year, and Ms. Wise alluded to this, can be extremely stressful for and difficult on families. I want to thank her for putting up not only everything, not only during the campaign season, this campaign season, but for all of our campaigns, particularly tolerating all of the events that are scheduled on the evenings and in the weekends. So thank you, Susan, for picking up my slack and for always being there. My daughter is a sophomore at Hillsborough High School, plays on the softball team, golf team, and plays travel softball. Yet despite all the things she has going on and being a 16-year-old, she took time to help us on the campaign trail. So thank you, Elizabeth. Next, I want to thank my sister, Kimberly. She worked extremely hard during this campaign. In fact, she was a walking machine, going door-to-door every day. By my account, she hit at least 15,000 homes. So thank you, Kim, for your hard work. I appreciate it more than you'll ever know. I want to say how proud I am of my son, Jake. He's a junior at the University of Florida. I didn't see that. And, but thanks to online classes, he's been able to help out significantly on the campaign trail. This is his second campaign, and he's become a real pro, putting up signs, sign-waving, knocking on doors. He did it all. With his personality and work ethic, the sky's the limit on what he can accomplish, possibly even public service. So for my political opponents out there, look out. You may see another Hagan on the ballot in a few years. But Jake, I'm proud of you, buddy. Last but not least, there's absolutely no doubt that if we're not for one man, I would never have been elected in 2002 or have been reelected six times. In an era of paid campaign consultants, campaign managers, finance chairman, one man has not only worn all these hats, but he's tirelessly campaigned door-to-door. He's without a doubt the hardest-working man I know. He's my role model, and his name is also Ken Hagan. He's my father, and I'll never be able to thank him enough for everything he's done for me. Thanks, Dad. We did it again. In closing, I'm honored and humbled to, again, have the opportunity to serve the residents of Hillsborough County, and I'm looking forward to working with each commissioner to continue to improve the quality of life for everyone in this great county. Thank you.
And next, we have District Three Commissioner Gwen Myers.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. First, I want to give thanks to my constituents of District Three for giving me four more years to serve this county. It really means a lot. I was unopposed, and I cannot thank you enough. I'd like to give thanks to my aides, Wanda West, Wanda, please stand. Jason Marlowe, I think you're in the back. Please wave your hand. You know, to, to run an office, you have to have two good aides to make sure you answer all the constituents' calls, and we hold town hall meetings, and we take it to the citizens, and it's just a joy, and all the county staff that participate in our town hall meetings. I would like to thank my 97-year-old mother. Mother, please wave your hand. She continues to instill in me what and how to do what's right. Even she made sure two weeks ago, I had the Daily Bread wording for today. And so I said, Mama, when I got up this morning, I read it, because she's always making sure, it's five of us, that she makes sure that we know the Lord, that we doing what's right, and she reminds us, we're not serving man, we are serving God. And at times when you want to throw the towel in, you're reminded of... And at times when you want to throw the towel in, you're reminded of who you're serving, and it keeps you going. To my husband, Renoff, wave your hand, please. It's been a challenge for us these past two months in the household. He's having surgery on tomorrow on his left hand, but I pray so hard for him to be with me today, because it would have been a bittersweet morning if he wasn't here, and it's a sacrifice. You know, you're not feeling well, you're in pain, you know, but for your lovely wife, what would you do? You would show up. And so, as the former county employees, to the current county employees, we're going to make some changes. We're going to have that diversity, inclusion, and equity, and I look forward to working with our county administrator, Bonnie Wise, who I have known over 30-plus years, to make this county better, and we can do it. Particularly to all our directors, we can do it. It takes all of us to work as a team in how we serve all the constituents. And to my elevator friend, as I've known for so many years, and now our county attorney, see, I told you I'm a former county employee. So Christine Beck and I used to ride the elevator back in the day together, but now she was just Assistant County Attorney, and I was just Gwen Myers. Now today, she is the county attorney, and I'm Commissioner Gwen Myers. And so with all this being said, you know, when you think about who we're serving and the people of this county, it means a lot for me to come back as a former county employee and as a commissioner, because I know, first, I have firsthand of a lot of things, and to make sure that this county moves forward. I'm not looking for us to go backwards, but I'm looking for us to, I'm looking forward to working with the new board, and congratulations, because this is a good county, as I always tell our employees. We have to do what's right when it comes to the citizens of this county. We might talk about the services we want to cut, but when you get all and receive all the emails, they would change that for you. Ask me, I can tell you. So with that being said, just want to say thank you, and I'm truly honored and humble. And to Judge Scrivens, thank you. I reached back to you back in July to make sure you would be available to be here today. See, when things are important, you cannot wait to the last minute, because she's a judge and she's presiding. But with that being said, I say thank you to everyone. I'm just honored to serve again. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Commissioner Owen of District Four to share a few words.
I got to get this right. First, I want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for, He is the reason, He is my why, and it is such an honor to be here. I first want to recognize my family as well. You know, when you run for office, it's harder on your family than it is on you, right? You get some negative mailers and things in the mail, and you kind of laugh at them, but your family, it's different, you know? So they run with you. And my mom and dad, where are you at, somewhere around here? You two are my heroes. I am so thankful that in 1975, when I was born, you decided to move to Brandon, Florida. I am one of the rare people that is from the community, from District Four, a district that I'm absolutely in love with. The folks out there are a little different than everywhere else. We have our agriculture communities, we have our retirement communities, coastal water living now, because we have Apollo Beach in my district. There are so many diverse needs, and yes, commissioners, I've noticed that all the building and development really has to go to South and East County. So I understand the challenges that are before me. I want to recognize my predecessor and a mentor, Stacy White. He didn't want to be here today, because he said he'd steal my thunder. I didn't see it that way. I also want to thank my brother and sister. My sister's a year younger than me, but she taught me how to tie my shoes. So I've always been a little bit, she's the smartest one in our family, and my brother's just somebody who just always has your back, no matter what. So I want to thank you. My pastor's here at Arise Church. Thank you all for your prayers. They've been much needed. I think I'm going to need them a lot more. Honorable Judge Moody, I'm so thankful for you and your whole family, your whole legacy that you represent. It is an honor to be sworn in by you. Now, we got some major issues, as Commissioner Cohen and Hagan and Myers just stated, growth, public safety, and there's just so many issues that we are facing right now, but I'm excited about it. I like living in a county where everybody wants to move. I know a lot of you all disagree with that, but where else would you want to live but Hillsborough County, right? So I am thankful that we live in this great county, and I promise you all this and to my colleagues, there's going to be things we don't agree on. Hopefully, it's not a lot of things, but there are going to be. This is a political body. I am a conservative, I am a Republican, and my district expects me to act like that, and I will. But I think the majority of the things that we can, we need to work on here are not too political. Roads, safety, transportation, those kinds, schools, those kind of things, I believe, we can put our heads together and solve. It is such an honor to serve with you all. Most of you all, I've already gotten to know, and I look forward to learning from you as my colleagues as well. So I just want to thank the people of District Four again for voting for me. Again, I am going to work as hard as I can to help improve District Four and make Hillsborough County the best county in the state of Florida. God bless you all, and God bless Hillsborough County.
And next, countywide District Five Commissioner Cameron Cepeda.
Hi. First of all, I want to give all the glory to God and my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for that is why I'm here today. I'm so thankful for my husband. That was a big blessing to me during this campaign, even with his health. He really pushed, 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 and he was just amazing. To everyone that prayed for me and all those, I really appreciate continued prayers now as well, and I'm really looking forward to serving with everyone here on the Board of County Commissioners, everyone here in the county. Just excited to, and I'm, it's going to be amazing. I'm really looking forward to it, and really would like for Hillsborough County to be such a great example to the rest of the counties in Florida and to the other counties in the United States, that this is just going to be amazing, what the change, it's going to be amazing changes for better, everything getting better and better here in Hillsborough County. I'm very excited, and God bless you all.
And finally, Commissioner Wostel, who represents countywide District Seven.
Good morning, everyone. If there's one thing you're going to like about me, it's my brevity. I can't, I can't help but to notice, looking out, that my son is by far the youngest person in the crowd, and I think that that's an important reminder that these decisions are about his generation, not my own, because it's going to be theirs that fill the impacts of our decisions, decisions today more greatly than anyone else. And I think that that's an important reminder in our starkness to try and believe that we're going to fix something or break something, to remember who it's actually going to affect. Everyone in the crowd that's been here has heard me talk, unfortunately, so much the past 22 months of this campaign, and fortunately today, I will say for the first time, I'm happy to hear my wife be able to say, "I told you so," when she reminds me that it was her decision that I run. I, I have one thing to say, and that's let's get to work. Thank you very much.
And with that, I'd like to congratulate Commissioners Cohen, Hagan, and Myers on the commencement of their next term of office. It'll be a pleasure working with you all again. I'd also like to congratulate and welcome Commissioners Owen, Cameron Cepeda, and Wostel as they begin their service to the residents of Hillsborough County. I'm sure I speak for my colleagues when I say we look forward to working with you and getting to work and serving this community. This board certainly has important work to do. I'm confident together, we're going to make great strides and accomplish much for all of the constituents of Hillsborough County. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us for the 2022 Investiture Ceremony of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. I want to make note that this new board of county commissioners will reconvene at 11:00 AM today for our organizational meeting, and in the meantime, I'd like to invite everyone, including all our commissioners and guests, to the first-floor multipurpose room, where we're hosting a reception celebrating our reelected and newly-elected commissioners. And again, thank you to everyone for attending and being part of this great day in Hillsborough County.